Okay, let me see. Sure day, can you pass me? Oh, you already have. Thank you. You're ahead of me. Let me open up my PowerPoint here. Okay, can everyone see my screen? I'm gonna make it larger here. But I'm hoping everyone can see it, okay? So, welcome everyone. I'm Anita McKeg. I'm the case reviewer for the Old Hickory Plan Amendment. We're gonna go ahead and get started. This meeting's being recorded on YouTube for people to watch later that may not make it. And sometimes we are on MNN Channel 2 and Facebook Live, depending on what their schedules like. So, we have a couple of us from the planning department, and we have the property owners, the Paine's with us. And we also have Councilmember Larry Hager and someone from ITS today who's helping us this evening. As I mentioned, we, there's the Webex link, and everyone comes into the meeting with their audio muted. It makes the recording better and also the sound better. We have a Q&amp;A panel that I will explain in just a minute on how to work that. And as I mentioned, the meeting is being recorded and posted to YouTube. Okay, so there are two ways to ask questions. One is this Q&amp;A module where you can type your question at any time. Just be sure and select all panelists to send it to all of us and not just one of us so that we can see it. Make sure someone sees it. And you can do that at any time when I'm speaking. And the other time is when we actually get to the Q&amp;A section. You can raise your virtual hand, which is this button down here, this icon down here, and we'll know that you have a question. I just, I think everyone is joined us through their computer, but in case someone has called in, if you're just called in via phone, this function, of course, doesn't work for you. You're in listen-only mode. And just another note, as you can see, all of us as panelists, and we can see the entire list of meeting attendees. But if you're an attendee, you can only see yourself. So, don't think that there's only one person on this meeting because there are more. You just can't see everyone. So, I'm gonna talk a little bit about why we're here tonight and give some background information on community planning, policy and zoning, and the proposed amendment. But most of the time, it's gonna be questions and discussion. So, why are we here tonight? It's to describe the proposed changes. We had a community meeting scheduled back in March that got canceled, of course, due to the city shutdown. For those of you that got a meeting notice during that time, you'll see that there was an initial study area that was two properties. It was 103 Fields Drive and 102 Fields Drive right here. In March, we heard from several people that were concerned about this property on the right-hand side here. And so, we've taken that out. It's not gonna be discussed tonight. Tonight, we're focusing on 103 Fields Drive over here. One of the main reasons we have community meetings is to involve the public and gather your feedback and hear from you as we prepare to make recommendations to our planning commission. So, a little bit of background about community plans. Community plans began in the 1980s, and they are what take the general plan, Nashville Next, which covers the whole city, but it's very broad with goals. They take it down to the community and neighborhood-specific level. So, you see that there are 14 areas across the city. And tonight, we're in Old Hickory, which is part of the Donaldson Hermitage Old Hickory Community Plan. And policy is usually, we usually look to community plans when there are decisions to be made, such as when someone asks for a rezoning, or when we're looking to prioritize CIB projects for the budget and different things. What planners use to explain policy categories, we use something called the Community Character Manual. And it gives us, it's what we call our policy dictionary, and it helps shape the form and character of a community and provides us criteria for how things should look and function and relate to other aspects of design. Planners also use something called the transect, which runs from all the way from T1 natural open space, which is like Bell's Bend Park, Beaman Park, Warner Parks, all the way through rural areas like White's Creek to suburban to urban, to areas like midtown, all the way to the most intense part of the city downtown. Most of Donaldson Hermitage Old Hickory's in the suburban transect. So, that's where, what we'll be talking about tonight, the suburban characteristics. So, why are policies important? One of the things they do is they guide Planning Commission recommendations to Metro Council for zone change requests. So, if someone comes in and asks for a zone change request, if it is consistent with the existing land use policy, there's a higher likelihood that the planning commission is gonna recommend approval. The opposite is true. If a, if a property owner comes in and asks to change rezon, to rezone, and the request is not consistent with the policy, there's a higher likelihood that the planning commission will recommend disapproval. But our community plans and policies aren't static. So, property owners have the right to ask to change the land use policy and to rezone their property. One of the aspects that public engagements require. Things that factor into our analysis, there are a lot of plans. I've mentioned Nashville Next and the community plans, but there are also other metro plans that, that govern our decision. We also look for like site-specific and geographic locational characteristics. And here's another list, but we, community sentiment also plays a large role in our decision-making. So, every property in Davidson County has land use policy and also has zoning. So, there are two different things, and we'll talk both about them tonight, but people often get confused. Land use policy is what we look to for the future vision, and it guides when somebody comes in and wants to change their zoning. So, in this case, we're looking at a request from suburban neighborhood maintenance policy to suburban mixed-use corridor policy. And at the same time, the property owners want to change what they're legally entitled to do with their property, which is zoning from RS20 to mixed-use limited. So, here's a map showing the requests. This is a map of what policy looks like. So, of course, here's Old Hickory Boulevard, and here's Fields Drive, and here are all the various properties. We're talking about 103 Fields Drive. And the policy is currently suburban neighborhood maintenance policy. That's a residential policy that recognizes established neighborhood. Sometimes you'll find things, of course, like churches or schools in suburban neighborhood maintenance policy. And across Old Hickory Boulevard is a policy called suburban mixed-use corridor. And it's just that. It's a mix of uses that can be office, residential, commercial, institutional along the corridor. And that's what they would like to change to. Here's a map of what the existing zoning looks like today. So, the neighborhood Fields Drive is RS20. And what that means is residential, single-family, on a minimum 20,000 square foot lot, so about a half an acre lot minimum. Along the corridor to rezoning, or to zoning districts, it's hard to see the difference. But there's a subtle hatch pattern on this red right here and right here, and that is mixed-use neighborhood zoning. And then, there's a more solid red, which is this, as well as this, and this is mixed-use limited zoning, which is just that, a variety of uses. Mixed-use neighborhood is smaller in scale than mixed-use limited. You can imagine mixed-use neighborhoods calling for neighborhood-type services. Then you've got some other residential zoning districts. This one's single and two-family on 20,000 square foot lots. Over here, single-family on 10,000 square foot lots. Single and two-family on 15,000 square foot lots, and single and two-family on 20,000 square foot lots. So, a lot of residential surrounded by the corridor. One important thing, here's an aerial image too. And I know that all the people on Fields Drive are very familiar with what this looks like. So, one thing I wanna make sure that everybody's aware of though, is these are, there's two properties here. Like, you look at it, and you may think, oh, this is all one property. And when you zoom in on our map, sometimes things don't overlay quite correctly. So, for instance, property lines, which are these gray outlines here, don't match exactly with the aerial photo. So, thus, it looks like people's houses are on another property, and that's not really the case. But the message to drive home is that here's a piece of property right here that the Paine's also own. And it's already in mixed-use corridor policy, and it's already zoned mixed-use limited. It's about .2 acres, so not, not that large. And then, here's the property we're talking about tonight, which is about .3 acres and 103 Fields Drive. So, several people have called me, and folks had, each person had a question about access. So, I talked to Public Works and our transportation planners, and what they said was that it's at a later point in the process where Public Works usually takes a look at someone's development plan and decides on access. What they said, though, was they anticipated that this property, Fields Drive, across the street is where access would line up, that they would encourage access to line up across Fields Drive with this. And so, here's another picture of what it looks like. This, of course, is facing more north with the adjacent home here and Old Hickory Boulevard out here. So, now, I just wanna take a minute and pause and ask the Paine's to talk a little bit about what they wanna do.
Hey, guys. We would like to build a salon on, that, we will combine the two acres, 101 and 103, into one property rather than two, obviously. And then, our goal is to build a salon on the property. That is what we want to do.
Okay. And Christie, have you talked about size or anything like that, like how big it would be?
Yes. We're thinking probably anywhere between 2 and 3,000 square feet, depending on parking. We don't know how much parking you have to have for each. Yeah. That's kind of what, we're hoping that, once we get the two properties combined into one and have it surveyed, then we'll take that to an architect, and they will be able to tell us all of that.
Okay. So, are you all thinking then approximately, what would that be like? Maybe three stations for stylists, or is that, have you even gotten that far yet?
Oh, no. I mean, we have 1,500 square feet currently where we're at, and we have 13 hairdressers.
Okay.
So...
Thinking a different, I had to, I have to translate numbers and think in a different way. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, in a 2,000-square-foot building, you could have probably... My goal was to add about seven more stations, so I would probably have about 20 stations. And then, I would also have a nail tech room that would have two nail techs in the room.
Okay. That sounds like you may need quite a few parking spaces then.
Yes. That's why most of it will be pavement.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And so, now, everybody, we, we are ready. We're at the point with the Q&amp;A section. Everyone remember how to ask questions. And I know that Gary has got a group of people at his house, so why don't we start with some questions from Gary's group?
Go ahead. Anybody have any questions?
How are they gonna get in there? They're not gonna use our ground, are they?
She said, how are you accessing into Field?
How are they gonna access our property at the beauty shop?
Can you hear us?
But one, one at a time, there is a lot of background noise and stuff. I heard someone talk about, how are you gonna access, right?
How are the people traveling to and from the beauty salon, how would they access the property? Through Old Hickory Boulevard or through Fields Drive?
I don't know if Christie and Jason are further along in the process, but what I was told was that more than likely, when Public Works takes a look, it is going to be Fields Drive.
No.
And I've heard from people before that you all have concerns about that because of the traffic from Molly Maid and just cars in and out and not paying attention to traffic that's already on Fields Drive, just entering. And then, the traffic problems with, with entering into Old Hickory Boulevard with as much traffic as it has and the people speed along Old Hickory Boulevard. So, that's some of the background, right?
Have they considered specific plan zoning?
Christie and Jason, have you all thought about specific plan zoning? Or the councilman, have any of you talked about that?
We've not, nobody said anything to us about that. We don't know what that is.
Specific plan is a zoning district where you create your own. In other words, it's, it's tied to what you wanna do with your property, and you can talk about specific things like how big specifically the building's gonna be, like limiting certain uses that neighbors might be concerned with, access of the property and that. The trade-off is that things come up in the specific plan process earlier, like, for instance, site plans, things that you have to do as part of your building process anyway, but they come up sooner in the review process. And so, you've gotta spend some money upfront for, you know, hiring professionals to do your site plan and things.
No.
Pretty common, though, isn't it, specific plan zoning nowadays?
Yes, we have several. We do. We have a lot of specific plan districts. What we try to do, though, is balance those and not require a specific plan for everything, but find the balance between where they're needed.
Now, I have a question. This is Jason Payne. So, there's, there's a, there's already a cutout going into the property from Old Hickory Boulevard. So, that's not an option?
Jason, that's something that you need to talk with Public Works about and work with. What, one of the challenges that comes up is that definitely along the city's major streets, Public Works and our transportation planners don't want any more cuts in and out of a major corridor than they have to. Because you can imagine, you know, when someone enters, you know, a property or it's a continuous curb cut, that affects pedestrians and bicyclists and people turning and things. And so, that's something that you need to work and have a, have a definitive answer from them about. I'd heard from some community members that weren't as concerned with what you're proposing to do if you access from Old Hickory Boulevard versus Fields Drive. But at the same time, some community members are still concerned about the scale of what you're trying to do. And, and, you know, they ask, you know, does it mean that the entire property's going to be paved and things? So, I think, I am still hearing some community concerns.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we wouldn't, we wouldn't need, because that's one of the issues that I have where I'm at right now, being in the shopping center, is that I don't have a lot of parking. And so, I mean, I would only, obviously, we would only build to where we could have as much parking as what we needed. And we won't know any of that until we can get the property... What is it called?
Survey.
Survey. Couldn't think of the word. Yeah. Until we get the property actually surveyed.
Question in the Q&amp;A box about plans for 102 Fields. And I think that this is only for 103 Fields. Is that correct?
Right. That's right. There are no plans for 102 Fields that we're aware of. Right. This is 103. So, I think I'm gonna go back to, let's see, I'm gonna go back to my PowerPoint here, because I wanna... So, the property across the street here, of course, is much bigger. You know, you're dealing with, with over an acre, and you can, you can see how much parking takes up and how much parking they're required to have. So, I'm just looking at that in comparison. And I think parking is, I think parking's gonna be an issue. So, is there another, I'm hearing some background noise. Gary, do you all have another question?
I do. I'd like to ask the property owners, why have you not already gotten this survey done before you presented it to the community?
Because we don't have the properties as one.
So, we can't do, we're not gonna spend a bunch of money if we don't even know that we can get it rezoned yet. So, I mean, that would be kind of not very smart on our part, I guess.
Why would we possibly vote for you to have access and change the zoning when we don't know what we're voting for?
Well, I mean, I'm building a salon.
We're building a hair salon. I mean, I don't know.
But you've got 20 stations and 20, so that'll be 20 cars just for your people to come to work, and then another 20 people coming in and having their services provided. That's 40 cars.
It's about 300 plus square feet of space for parking lots, and probably 12,000 square feet of parks.
But see, that's what I'm saying. I don't know how big of a salon that I can build yet. I won't know that until I have it surveyed.
I really think you need to have it surveyed and then present to us what you wanna have done.
That's why I think specific plan zoning will answer a lot of these questions.
And then, who's responsible for looking at how they, if they were granted access to Fields Drive? That's right there in a curve. That's not a very safe place to be exiting out of, coming out of a curve. Who looks at that?
Right. That would be Public Works.
And when does Public Works get involved?
They get involved later when someone, after they have rezoning, and you go and submit like site plans and things like that, and you're going through codes and everything. That's when Public Works is taking a look at access for this type of zoning.
Why can't Public Works address it before any type of zoning has been granted? Why would we grant zoning for something that we don't know what they're gonna do for us?
Right. That, the, the most, Roberta, the most answer I got there was that they anticipate that they would say Fields Drive, that ideally, they would try to line it up across Fields Drive with, with the Molly Maid entrance. But they couldn't say for sure because they don't look at it until later in the process. So, right, that does it, that does not fully answer what you all, your question.
Correct.
Anita, we have another question in the Q&amp;A box. It is, will the street parking for cus, will street parking for customers and staff be prohibited? And then, along the same lines, is the salon going to face Old Hickory Boulevard or Fields? And will, whereabouts would parking be on the site?
Let's take the second part of that first. Christie and Jason, have you thought about like which way your building would face?
Yes, ma'am. I would like for my building to face Old Hickory Boulevard. I would like for the front door to be facing Old Hickory Boulevard. And no, that, that we will not allow customers or staff to park on the street. I didn't think that was even allowed, but I didn't even think that was remotely an option, honestly, so...
The second part of that was whereabouts on the site, do you anticipate the parking lot being?
I would like for the building to come in the, the middle of the property of one of, between 100, because we will, we own 101 and 103. So, we're not trying to just put a building and parking and everything else on .3 of an acre. And so, my goal will be that it's in more of the center of the two properties, and there, that there will be parking in the front for customers and parking in the back for employees.
Okay. And then, you'd have to, of course, incorporate some type of buffer, landscape buffer, or something between your property and the neighbor.
Correct.
You ready for another question?
Sure.
This is Mike Wood, and I'm formally represented this area in the Metro Council. And so far, this is probably the worst presentation I think I've ever heard. It is not well thought out, not considerate of the people that's living in this area. One of the things that you had said, the presenter, is that you're considering sentiment. Well, there's a lot of sentiment here right now, and we're 15 people strong, and we're all sitting in the rain, just to let you know how sentiment is. Now, the specific question is, I've not heard any, any reason why we should do anything. I mean, we've, I've been in this property since the mid-1960s, and why all of a sudden do I need to do anything just because you purchased a lot? There's no re, I mean, how does, you've taken, your, the idea is to take one of the prettiest areas in Lakewood and to change it so that you have to drive by commercial business establishments to get to the peace and quiet of your own home? And there's an example, three streets down, Iris Avenue, where this same, same reasoning, same proposal was made 20 or 30 years ago in houses along Old Hickory Boulevard. The zoning was changed, deleting the residential requirement. And in its place came car lots, different types of massage parlors, and all kind of stuff. It's just, just absolutely awful, and you have to pass through that to get to the peace and quiet of your home. And I lived here in the time period that Iris Avenue was just as pretty as Fields Drive is now. And I would have said that would never have happened to Iris Avenue, but it did. So, the thing that I don't understand is why we're even being brought, I know there's property a block down the street that's available. You wanna put your 30-car parking lot in just for employees right down across from Andrew Jackson Elementary School, where the Old Hickory Credit Union is. There's lots of commercial property. You won't have any of these conversations. Everything is already in place. You can just start breaking ground and building there. So, I don't even know why you're choosing this particular lot for this very, very, very questionable type of development. So, the question is, why? Why? Why, why, why? Why us? Why?
Well, to answer, it's not a questionable establishment. I have been in business for over 18 years in Hermitage, and I'm a very established salon in the area, a very reputable salon. So...
We don't need a salon. I don't need a salon. Nobody needs a salon.
Okay. Well, you may not, but other people do, and other people like it. And we're not coming to try to trash a neighborhood at all.
Again, this was all, everything that was said back 20 or 30 years ago, right along Old Hickory Boulevard, the same thing for the same reason. And the people that live there for generations said, well, let's help out that nice couple. Let's let, let's change our zoning. And the idea of you asking to devalue our property so that you can get benefit from it is, is just unbelievable, absolutely unbelievable.
I'm not valuing the property by no means. I'm sorry, but I am not doing that at all. 101, 102 is already an MUL. I mean, I'm sorry, 101 is already MUL. Then 103 is adjacent to that. So, that's why we bought the property, because the, the one was already MUL.
We've got some more questions in the Q&amp;A box, specifically for that.
I didn't get an answer.
To what?
I didn't get an answer.
What would you like answered?
Why?
I told you why.
Why would we do anything? Why would I hurt my own property value?
It's not gonna hurt you.
The highest consideration I can have is residential. And basically, you're saying, would you come, well, basically, what you're saying is, would you allow me to come into my residential area and put my business? Well, that's, I mean...
That's not hurting anybody's property. I'm not gonna hurt anybody's property. That is not...
Okay, let's, let's, the question, I wanna get to JC's question because I accidentally skipped over it earlier. JC is asking, is MUL the best choice to protect the integrity of the neighborhood? And he follows up with, once the property is rezoned, is it possible to put many different businesses, including bars, nightclub, etc., if the proposed salon falls through?
I don't know. The Paine's, did you, I know that you were looking at, you know, your 101 Fields Drive is already zoned MUL. So, just... So just, you know, it's, it's easy then to make the assumption that, hey, let's, let's have the same zoning. But did you guys explore at all mixed use neighborhood and if that, if that met like your needs? Because that is like a step down, that's what, what the property across Fields is owned and what this one appears on too. But to the heart of J C's question is that anytime you see one of our rezoning districts that is not a specific plan, you see something like mixed use limited, mixed use neighborhood, commercial services. More than likely, there is a long list of uses that, that are allowed within there. And then there are some, another bucket of uses that may be permitted with conditions or permitted by a special exception. So, one of the concerns that usually comes up or almost always comes up when someone's trying to rezone in a, in a residential area is that there is the, the, the case where the property may be sold or the use go away. And yes, something else could happen there as long as it fits within the character and of what's allowed within those rezoning districts. So, for some people, mixed use neighborhood might be a better bet, you know, but for, for others, they're still going to have the same concerns. What other, Laura, what other questions have we had pop up? Sorry to get you while you're taking a sip of water.
Really just exploring the, is M U L, M U L the best fit for the neighborhood? And then we have a comment that sounds like you're trying to squeeze a one to two acre facility on a half acre, more of a comment than a question.
Okay, so Jason and Christie, I've heard in the past week, I've had numerous people call me and talk with me about their concerns and things. And so, we've got, if you wonder why I'm going to, to Gary's house a lot, I don't know if you, you may have joined us after we talked about that they've got fifteen people there at the house that have joined together that live along Fields Drive so that they could watch and ask questions. So that's why they're saying things like, there's a bunch of us here and things like that. So, the, the concerns that I've heard run the gamut from, that people are very concerned about encroachment into a residential area, that this area was established in the nineteen sixties. And even though the Molly Maids is, that that house, a long time, possibly from the time it was built or shortly thereafter, was, was a commercial use, and so that was kind of a trade off made a long, long time ago. And so folks are concerned, then you've heard tonight about the access from Fields Drive and wanting access from Old Hickory to be insured, which you can't do at this point. So, I think, I think that it's kind of been an impasse based on what I've, the concerns I've heard from people. Unless you all want to, I think you've got a couple, couple of choices. Differ and, and work on a survey, a property survey, to be able to talk a little bit more about what you want to do. I think the possibility might be that the community members are going to ask you for a specific plan. I don't know if the councilman wants to weigh in on some, on some suggestions here too. But I know that I've just heard a lot of concerns that aren't going to go away.
This is Larry Hager, councilman. That, that was the concerns I had was coming out on Fields Drive and they asked about Old Hickory Boulevard. The other thing is that I mentioned was the S P, which is the special plan. And I think a lot of them wanted to know, you know, where the building would sit, how big it would be, those type of things. And then on top of that, if you do M U N and M U L is on or stack, restrict those. There's some things that you can take out of the M U L and M U N and restrict those uses. That's another question that people had of me. And I gave that alternative, you could do an S P, which in an S P, you would have a specific plan. It'd be mapped out and then you could put limited what uses it could be used for. An M U N, as we know, but as I understand, you can always restrict other uses to the property even under that zoning. But that's the reason we have these meetings. I want everybody to be informed of what they're asking to do and what alternatives they are, unless they just want to reject the whole situation, that's entirely up to the community. So, my suggestion, and when you talk about parking, I would suggest that the Pains need to go talk. The codes of permits for the use and occupancy, they have to know how big your building's going to be, how many employees there's going to be. And then they decide on how many people are going to be coming in and out of there. And they determine exactly how many parking spaces you're going to have to have. So, to get a use and occupancy, you've got to be able to show them exactly how many people are coming in, how many people are working there. And based on that, they will determine how many parking spaces you have to have.
I want to take a second real quick to check in with J C. I see his hand is still raised. I'm not sure if he has another question he wants to ask on the phone and be unmuted or not. You're unmuted, J C. All right, since we don't hear from him, I am going to assume that we answered his question.
Are we muted or unmuted? I mean, it honestly, it just seems to us that it doesn't matter what we say, that the community's got their mind made up, that they don't want a salon there and they don't want to change it to commercial property. So, you know, I don't know.
We did get another question about who has the final call on whether a proposed build is of appropriate size for the lot.
Well, I mean, obviously we would build what we can build. I mean, you can't build over what codes is going to let you build. So if they say twelve stations is what I can have, then twelve stations is what I'm going to have. I mean, you can't build over what codes will let you build. So, the property is how big it is, and so whatever they will let me do is what I will do.
I'm trying to think through, through some, some options for you because the councilman laid out one. One would be that you could go and, and make an appointment and talk to, to, to codes. Find out who and codes you needed to talk to for use and occupancy. And just say, we've got this property, if we combine, it's what, what is it, half an acre? Half an acre, you know, and we want to do a salon, how do you think, you know? And then, like you said, they can, they can look up that each station requires X amount of permit, you know, parking, you know? Because, you know, you've got the overlap of customers, I mean, you've got various things going on, so they could tell you some of that stuff. So, for some concerns I've heard, that, that would satisfy some of what we've heard. In other words, you would come back to the community and say, hey, you know, this is what we've heard for half an acre site, we could build this. And this building would be X Y big, it would have X amount of parking space. Now, that's still not going to satisfy the, some of the other concerns we've heard, which might be satisfied with a specific plan zoning if you could guarantee certain things, such as access, exactly which way the building faces, you know, square footage, different things like that. However, you're not guaranteed that the community would accept it then either. And like you said, you spent a lot of money on the front end for something that might not, that you might not know.
Yeah, that's, that's the issue, I mean.
Because even if we figure out all of that, then, okay, so let's say we present that and then they, the public works will only let us access from Fields Drive, well, that's not going to make anybody happy either. So then we're going to do all that and then them still not be happy about it, I mean.
I mean, I don't understand that it's an issue. I've never saw parking or traffic be an issue over there now, even with Molly Maid there. I'm over there all the time and I, I never see a problem with traffic. So I, I don't, I don't know.
I mean, we're, we're on the very end, we're not going to come through a neighborhood.
Right, I, I'm not hearing concerns about you creating traffic through the neighborhood. I'm hearing concerns about just how hard it is to get out on Old Hickory Boulevard now. And that, worried about safety with, I, I, you know, I think that the, some, when you, when you are accessing a dead end street, you get used to there nobody being there and you just kind of pull out, you know what I mean? And so I've heard that concern a lot, that people pull out in front of each other because they're not paying attention. So I don't think anyone's saying you're, you know, going to do that. I think you're down to two options. I think one is that you could explore talking with codes, the use and occupancy permit, and trying to define some more about what your site would be. And you could talk to Public Works about what they think access is, okay? That is just costing you time, I mean, I guess going and meeting with them, I don't think it's costing you a lot in plans. It's costing you phone calls, conversations, you know, sitting down and talking with people. You could report back to the neighborhood with that information. And then see if that helped, what the community thought about that before you decided, you know, like, I mean, if, you know, specific plan's off the table and you don't want to pursue that, then I think one suggestion is doing that. Just having those conversations and seeing, you know, it might be that you don't come back to the community because you don't like the answers you get from codes and from Public Works. You see what I'm saying?
No, there are no guarantees in business. Yeah.
Show us what you want.
Yeah, I mean, we will, sure, I mean, we'll ask Public Works and see if we can have, I mean, I honestly did, I wanted an Old Hickory Boulevard access. I didn't want a Fields Drive access, I just had been told by multiple different people that they didn't think that they would grant that to us. That they, even though there is already an access on the property.
That's what I was.
There is already one there off of Old Hickory Boulevard.
And maybe it is that you can use that. I, I do know from a planning perspective, like I said, we, we're trying to cut down on how many people access our tierals, but if an existing access is there, it may be that they allow you to use it. I just can't answer that question.
Right.
Okay, so what needs to happen next is that right now, you are scheduled for the September twenty fourth planning commission meeting and you need to defer. You need to defer from that because you won't be ready to go from that. So, have you guys, like, you have, you haven't started working on your rezoning notice or anything like that, have you?
The papers that we send out?
No, Michelle emailed you, she did email to you, I think, today or yesterday.
The signage?
Yeah.
Yes, well, we had already started working on that back in March.
Okay.
Yeah, so we had already, we printed up everything, we had already got it all printed up, yes.
Okay.
But that was back in March.
Okay, well, you won't be ready for the twenty fourth. So I, I think what I'm, what I'm trying to say publicly while everyone's on this call is that you won't be on planning commission on the twenty fourth. Because what you need to do is find out the answers to some of that, like I said, talk with codes, talk with Public Works. And I can help you get back in touch with the community members that are here tonight. And to, and you know, and have, we could schedule another one of these or, or we could, you know, we could have an email discussion about it with those members, depending on what those answers are. Does that make sense? Okay, so does that sound good to you, councilman?
Yeah, that sounds fine. One, one other suggestion that I got is for them to look at, you know, M U N or some type of venue with restrictions or the S P. Because I think the community is concerned about, you get a rezon M U L and then they, and somebody comes in and does something totally different. We've seen that happen before and I know that's a big concern of the community also.
Okay, no, definitely. We, anytime you're, and this is not just you all, it's anytime you're in a situation like this, we as planners try to find the zoning district that best matches what you want to do at the scale that's most appropriate. So that would be trying mixed use limit, I mean, mixed use neighborhood as opposed to mixed use limited. Now, I think Gary's hand's still up, so let's make sure that they don't have another question there.
I was just going to make a statement and maybe I shouldn't, but it sounds like this has ended the community meeting and we're into a counseling session on how they can get permission to build this site, which fifteen people here that live and are property owners are not really excited about. And I think your words are sentiment considered, again, there's a lot of sentiment and it's not positive.
Okay, okay, Gary, so are you all saying that, no, because I mean, that's a good question, it's totally appropriate. Are you all saying that even if the Pains talk to Public Works and Codes and get more definition about how big their building will be, where access will be, how much parking will be, that you guys don't even want to discuss it anymore?
Well, we're, we're open and very considerate of all people. But you called, you lost this in this meeting when you said you wanted, in essence, thirty vehicles just to have your employees there. That's your own words.
Not everybody is there at one time. We are very rarely all at the salon at the same time, very rarely.
All you're doing is stimulating the sentiment, I can assure you.
Where do you get sentiment from? I didn't say anything about sentiment.
Christie, he's talking about me.
I said, I didn't say that.
I said, I said, yeah, I said that as planners, we listen to community sentiment.
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
Okay, so if they came back, so, so Gary, okay, so some of the people are saying, are saying we would consider something if we had more information. And then, so are you saying, I, I need to know if they, if they're just spinning their wheels? If you, you know, because in other words, if they come back and say, well, we can only have ten stylists there at a time and X amount. I mean, do you guys want to discuss it anymore or?
Well, there's nothing that, that has been said that would encourage us that anything is beneficial to us, especially when there's available property one block down the road. And again, where the Old Hickory Credit Union is and the dentist office, there's available, there's signs that says for sale. There's available space in Old Hickory and maybe there is a big demand for a salon, I don't know. But I, there's plenty of parking that's available there. This is one of the nicest communities in Old Hickory, want to continue that. There has not been one head that showed and said, yes, we want to consider your proposal. Everything could change, so I'm not saying this for everybody, but all the property owners are listening to me and they're encouraging in what I'm saying right now. If it were me, I would be seriously considering this, especially being as it's ended a public meeting and end up a counseling session on what you need to do. That's, that's very, 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 very weak.
We have two hands raised.
Actually, can I say something about that? Weak? No. Considerate, yes, because we want to do anything possible to make you guys know that we are not in it to make your property devalued, bad, anything. All I want to do is put an upstanding salon in the community. So, port, no, I mean, that's just low, I'm sorry.
Okay, so Laura, we've got, you said another question?
Yeah, so Scott has their hand raised. I'm not sure if their question has been answered yet. Scott, you're unmuted.
Yes, I can't speak as a resident, even though for ten years I did live out there, but I, I moved off to my property. You know, I own the Molly Maid, own the Molly Maid. So, you know, my, my thing is, you know, I've tried very hard to respect the community and I've put a lot of investments in my property to landscape it and et cetera. And I think the property across the road is inevitable that it will eventually be some kind of a commercial and as long as it's a, a group that puts a respectable property there, building and respects codes and lays out some nice landscaping, I don't oppose it as long as it's done in the right way. And as far as the entrance goes, I know when we were trying to get entrance for hours into our driveway, that. that, um, we were told, you know, they were really against us putting a drive in off the Old Hickory Boulevard, simply because it creates a lot of traffic jams. Somebody's trying to turn into Phil's Drive, somebody else a hundred feet down is trying to turn in and that creates wrecks. And so they, they were, at the time we did ours, very much wanted us to use the Phil's Drive entrance and exit. Um, that's really all I have to say. I know we've tried very hard to respect the community, every improvement. And I've probably put two to three hundred thousand dollars in my property. It was a disaster when I bought it. We tried very hard to respect the community. As long as we have a, somebody owning that property next door that does the same, I think we're going to be okay. And that's the real key is do we have a, uh, somebody that would show the same respect? I think I've shown, I mean, others may, may feel different, but I think I have tried very hard to respect the, the residents.
Wasn't a com- question, it's a comment.
Thanks, Scott. Uh, and then the last hand that we have is just Rick's. Uh, Rick, if your question has already been addressed, feel free to put your hand down, but if not, you are unmuted.
A quick comment, please. Uh, I respect the pains for coming in front of us all. I respect their desire to better themselves. I respect the fact that they own that property and that they want to put something on it. I think they need to realize that they need to show us respect in regards to showing us exactly what they want to put on it. It's wanting, uh, this is a cart before the horse type situation. I understand they don't want to spend the money to see if they can put it on there in the first place. But at the same time, I, you know, I want to see what's going to be there. How can, how can we make a true opinion of this without knowing exactly what's going to be on there? All I hear is thirty car spaces, sixteen to twenty, uh, stations on a half acre. I live on a half acre just on the other side of those hedges. I live in Brandywine Place. And I can't picture all of that on my piece of property. I need to see it. Then I have an educated opinion. Until then, everything we're saying is speculation. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
I mean, here's the thing, guys. We will do whatever we need to do to, to give y'all better vision of what we're trying to do. We'll go to public works. We'll go to codes and permits, you know, try to get it surveyed. You maybe, you know, that's what we got to do. That's what we have to do. But everybody's visualizing like it's going to take this, that, like a half acre is actually quite big to do what we're trying to do. We're in a fifteen hundred square foot building right now and have fifteen employees. So it's not, you know.
It's not a massive explosion that you're, that you're thinking.
Yeah, that we're, that everybody's thinking. It's not this mass building and mass amount of people that they think it is, I guess, that everybody thinks it is. I mean, we're in a small strip mall now in Hermitage with Verizon, Krylike and everybody right there. And we don't have half the parking, you know, that, and, and it's not an issue over there.
We literally have like six parking spots.
Right. For three businesses. So it's not going to be the traffic that I guess everybody's thinking it is. So I, I know that may not easy, I, I mean, I, I can just, it's hard to visualize it, I guess.
Right. And I think I'm hearing that people need some kind of visualization to be able to, to even have a discussion and informed discussion about changing the policy and zoning.
I mean, here's the thing, we want to do whatever we can to like, like the guy just said that owns my, we're not trying to come in here and mess anything up or create problems for the, for the homeowners.
No, I don't want to put a nightclub or bar.
Right. If anything, it's right the opposite. We're there to, we're going to be there to serve the community and to serve the neighborhood. That's the kind of people we are. So, you know, we're not just going to come in there and, and do things that are just not right. Or if anything, we're going to go above and beyond to do what is right. So.
And here's the thing, I mean, you know, coming into this, we didn't know what we needed. We had no clue. Would there, nobody told us we needed to have, uh, our, our land surveyed and to talk to public work. We had already talked to a bunch of people and they had said that they more than likely would not give us access on Old Hickory Boulevard. So we didn't even think that would be an issue because it is, if it's not allowed, there's nothing that we can do about that. So if that's the deciding factor, then that's just, is, I mean, and that's just the, the deciding factor, but that's not on our part. Um, because that's, we would like an Old Hickory Boulevard access like we said. But, I mean, yeah, we're not gonna, we didn't know exactly. We've never done this before. We've never bought.
This too. Like, we're, that's not like we're some massive, you know, we would go out and buy land and property.
The property we have right now, we rent.
Yeah.
We, we don't own any commercial property until now. So we didn't know that we needed all of this stuff beforehand to come to this. Um, or we would have been better prepared, but we didn't know. I mean, all we thought, we were just getting, just tell you what we wanted to do. So, yeah.
Okay. So I think, I think we've answered all the questions. Uh, one more check in, uh, Gary, your hand's still, the, your hand's still up at your place. Any, any last? Any last questions?
Uh, yes, I'd like to know why the pains did not come and talk to the neighborhood and they were advised to get some plans put together. They spoke with Gary at least twice and Gary said, we went, nobody's going to approve this without some kind of plans. Draw something on a napkin, he told you. We, we still not seen that. And not anybody here other than matters said that you came and talked with them. Did you not think we mattered?
I've been to Gary's a few times, yes. But I can guarantee you by the reaction we've gotten from you, if I come in here with a napkin plan, you would have laughed at it. Guarantee you that.
We're laughing now.
Yes.
Then that's on you.
I take it, I take it.
Great community.
I mean, I don't.
Where's the presentation possible?
I, I don't understand what you mean.
Because we didn't know.
Like, why are you?
We didn't know exactly what we needed.
The same rules apply to everybody. It's no different for you than anyone else. It's your responsibility. You failed.
We've never done this before.
I mean, y'all don't have to be so ugly about it. Like, y'all are being really ugly, I mean, towards us, like for no reason.
For no reason. We've not done anything.
We're nice people too.
Well, we wouldn't know that by the way you're treating people.
Okay, well, I'm, okay, so I'm going to call time, I'm going to call timeout with this one. Um, we've got a community that wants to know more information. Uh, and we've got some property owners that need to find out some more information and make some decisions. So, um, I want to thank everybody for being with us tonight. I know that everybody's got my contact information and I know I'll hear from some of you. But, um, thanks, Councilman and, uh, I T S for helping us with this community meeting. And we'll figure out what the, what the next steps are based on pains, what you all want to do. Okay? So have a good night, everybody. Thank you, Laura.
Thank y'all. Good night.